Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency and City Council to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Mora is not here. Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Protes Amora?
Here.
And Mayor Rounds?
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make public comment, you'll have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
No speakers today, mayor.
Closed session. I'd like to... Public comments are now closed. I'd like to call upon the Assistant City Attorney to read the closed session items.
Yes, the City Council will be meeting in closed session pursuant to three items. Item number one will be conference with legal counsel with regard to real property negotiations at 11900 Telegraph Road. Also conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation and conference with labor negotiations... labor negotiators. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. We'll reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the Assistant City Attorney and to continue the... with the rest of the meeting. And I'd like to also, for the record, show that Councilmember John Mora is in the House.
Good evening, everyone. I think it's a Go Dodger night. Yay! I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Assistant City Attorney, is there a closed session item to report?
Yes, the City Council met in closed session pursuant to three items: conference with legal counsel with regard to real property negotiations, conference with legal counsel with regard to anticipated litigation, one matter, and conference with legal counsel with regard to labor negotiations. In all three matters, direction was given, but no reportable action was taken. This concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now continue with the rest of the meeting. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Rodriguez to lead us in today's invocation.
Thank you. Our Heavenly Father, we give thanks tonight for the privilege of meeting together to deliberate on matters affecting our city. We ask for your guidance in our efforts to work for the betterment of our community. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing. I'd like to invite the Santa Fe Springs Miss, Santa Fe Springs Court up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please, each of you announce your name and what school you go to?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sandra Sanchez, and I attend Santa Fe High School.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jaden Brown, and I attend Santa Fe High School.
Hi, everyone. My name is Savannah Salazar, and I attend St. Paul High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma Salas Sosido, and I attend St. Paul High School.
My name is Aviul Gateras, and I attend St. Gregory, the Great Catholic School.
Thank you. And Jaden, can you please, you hold one other title. Can you please let the audience know?
I recently won Homecoming Queen for Santa Fe High School.
Thank you. Introductions. I'd like to introduce the following members from the Chamber of Commerce. Our Chamber CEO, John Wilson. Scott Summerfield from Cascade Pump. And Nico Schubin from Serve Well Disposal. Thank you for attending tonight. Before we begin our scheduled presentations this evening, we'd like to acknowledge a very lucky resident who was part of history-making event on Friday evening. Santa Fe Springs residents David Flores, who is present with us today, was the individual who caught Shohei Ohtani's third home run ball at the Dodgers' reunion. We will now show a brief video of this historic moment.
Imagine being an owner of Dodgers history. Well, a Santa Fe Springs man walked away from game four of the NLCS with Shohei Ohtani's third homerun ball of that game.
Yeah, he sent three pieces of history into the stands the other night, the homerun coming in. What was likely the best performance we have ever seen in a playoff game by any player? Eyewitness news reporter Tim Pulliam has more on what that lucky man is planning to do with the ball.
Ohtani, did he? Ohtani! Ohtani has done it again! His third homerun!
This moment Friday night sent fans in a frenzy. Shohei Ohtani hit three home runs, helping the Dodgers advance to the World Series. A historic night for the team and for David Flores. The longtime fan caught Shohei's third ball.
I just had a Dodger hat on, and all camouflage. Maybe that's why I caught the ball, because nobody see me, and the ball came right to me.
The catch has been life-changing, but the sports fan, who's a professional boxing coach in Santa Fe Springs...
My phone is going off. My phone is ding 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 ding, nonstop.
And here's the coveted ball from Shohei's legendary postseason performance.
I'm very happy that this happened to me in my life.
Because now, David Flores has big plans for this lucrative piece of history.
I'm going to say this in the most humble way possible. I'm looking to sell the ball.
How much is this ball worth?
I mean, the market will tell us, but my initial estimation on that ball, due to the historic relevance of what happened on Friday night, I think it's three, four, five million dollars plus. It was the most historic, I think, single-player performance in any baseball game, let alone an NLCS-clinching game.
Mike Keyes is COO with SCP Auctions. He says before David can cash in, the images of him catching the ball will have to be reviewed and authenticated by a forensic firm that partners with an auction company. After that, David would have to take a lie detector test.
It was just another great day for Dodger baseball and for MLB and for history.
And perhaps for the luckiest guy right now in LA, a soon-to-be multimillionaire.
It hasn't hit me yet, to be honest.
Tim Pulliam, ABC 7, Eyewitness News.
David, we are delighted to have you here tonight. And as a boxing coach at Elite Pro Boxing here, right in here in Santa Fe Springs, we agreed to have you here this evening to accept a certificate from the City's Council and to highlight your wonderful city and your change-of-life event that I'm sure when you left the house, you had no idea. So, David, can I invite you up to the podium, please? Congratulations, sir. And I don't know if you're aware, I've known your family for years. My daughter and your sister, Dama, were best friends in high school.
Yeah, we used to have a mom out.
Yeah, yeah. So, on behalf of the City Council, I want to present you with a certificate of recognition. It's just, you're an amazing man. What a life-changing event the other night. That's how they say, "Life can change in a blink of an eye," and it did that night. Congratulations.
Okay, you guys, this is the baseball.
Of course, yeah, please.
Bring up anybody you want.
Come on, family.
Anybody you want, brother.
Okay, can I say?
Congratulations.
I'm like, kid.
All right. How'd you do that? Were you wrestling for the ball or what? Congratulations, congratulations.
I'll take a picture for you. I got you.
And David, David, one other thing, we also have a swag bag here, Santa Fe Springs paraphernalia, so enjoy that. And it's a great-looking bag, too. Make sure when you take the picture, it has Santa Fe.
No, give up on me. Do not give up on me.
I'm looking about my own chip.
There you go. Here in the city.
Cool guy. I talked to Coach about that.
It'd be elite, too.
To the, oh, right in between there? I don't know which way, I'm better over here.
That's the way. I'm taller. I'm good.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
So, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, sure. Go up to the microphone there, so people can hear you. Oh, David.
We can all take a picture after.
Okay, sure.
This is where I believe, this is where, there's a mark on the ball where I believe we're showing hit the homerun. There's a mark right here. That's where I believe that the mark was hit. If you can see it.
That's awesome, brother.
I did, the very first night I caught the ball, my friend Ali took me to the game. Me and Ali went to the game together. I did sleep with the ball in my pocket, in my camel sweats, in my camel shirt. You know what? I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs. I went to Santa Fe. I went to St. Paul. The last time St. Paul won a CIF championship, I was on that team. I was able to lead my team and along with my fellow teammates to a CIF championship victory. I love football. I love sports. Manino's been coaching me since I was a little boy. Football, basketball, I mean, football, baseball, and wrestling. Manino's been a huge part of my life. Not to, don't forget my parents, my mom, my dad, my Nina's always been there for me, everybody here, my lovely sister, you guys, my sister's been, she was in your guys' stage. She's now a sister pretty well at Cal-Hi. She went to Santa Fe, went to UCLA. She set the bar. You know, she was a great sister for me. She's been a good sister. You know, Javi, Ali, Kat, my other sister Kat, you know, Thomas, Vanilla, everybody in the city, okay? This is my city. I love my city. I have a St. Paul sword in store. But, you know, I'm very fortunate to be here. And not to forget, I bet you my son.
You got him all excited. You got him all excited.
David, she's the queen. Let her hold.
Who's the queen?
Right here. She's gonna be Santa Fe's queen. Let her hold the... Let her hold the ball. Your phone's going off again.
No, we're gonna do a selfie, dude. That's cool, okay?
Do whatever you want, brother.
Well, I'm gonna do a selfie video, you guys. We'll go around, okay?
Go Dodgers! Let's go! Let's go Dodgers! Let's go Dodgers! It's like taking it for him. It doesn't matter. Santa Fe Springs.
Congratulations.
Anything that helps out L.A., I don't care.
Hold on. David, hold on. David, hold on. We're not done with you. We are not done with David. This is on Saturday. Was it Saturday, Thomas? It was Friday. Did he caught the ball on Friday? I don't know. Thomas came up to me and told me his friend caught the ball and showed me the video. This is how the connection works in Santa Fe Springs. Thomas told me, I called Renee. Renee called Gus. Gus called somebody. Somebody called somebody. We got in touch with David. Gus did the story, and it just went on and on. Oh, this guy right here, too. He got involved in it, too, because he knows everybody, does he not? He knows everybody. And it went around and around. And it went around and around, and before you know it, we had David here. We are so proud of you, and we just want to say, we've watched your boxing, we've watched you coach, we are delighted to see what you've done with yourself out there and the way you're helping people in our community. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. You have made me very proud to be a Santa Fe Springs resident, so thank you.
All right. I just want to say one more thing to the future and my son. I'm sitting right here, and it's very important that you guys see that this is, anything's possible, that you guys could be sitting right here, too, and in a higher place, too. And I just hope that this is a good example for you guys, because this means a lot for me and for my son, but Sotana, you can sit right here, too, okay? And more, all right, son? All right.
David, first, hello, there we are. First and foremost, my gosh, you're so humble, and, you know, we really appreciate that. But it really shows the true spirit of our Santa Fe Springs community, and you are a pinnacle here. My gosh, you've been here since a little kid, you're still, you know, Mr. Santa Fe Springs. We're very honored to be able to share this moment with you, so is everybody else here in the entire community, all of Santa Fe Springs. We're sharing this moment with you, and congratulations, and I'm glad it happened to you. Good job.
No, it's just, it's great, but you see how humble you are, too, and thank you for accepting to come here and show it, because you didn't have to do this, but that just shows you what kind of person you are, that you're here, and how everybody here is your family, and you don't forget who your family is, and that's something that's really important. But no, just thank you so much, and it's life experience, life changing, it's just a whole new life for you now, but the fact that you still came and said hello and brought us something that's huge. I mean, you saw the girls, how excited, they were shaking, how excited, and you're still here and still humble, and you're here for your son, so thank you so much for allowing us for this moment, so thank you, thank you. Let me tell you your Instagram, I don't know how you're boxing all day long, I just watch you box and box, I don't know how that happens, but yeah, it's great, it's great.
David, you know, I know that where I've seen you plenty of times, it's always been at the boxing gyms. Whether my brother took his fighters there to Elite, and before Elite, you know, is now located where it's located, it was actually located on Oran Day and Florence, right there at the corner where we, city had to tear down, not us, but Cal-Trends itself, but, I mean, just so many times, and the story of David is actually one with, with its struggles and, and honestly, man, the blessing that you just received, that's God, brother. That's your faith, brother, because every day you're here with us, every day you're sharing with your son and the people around you. I mean, nobody knows the struggles, but still, but you've been through them. And to receive that ball, bro, and how it fell, you know, on your lap, it bounced, it just literally bounced into your hands, I mean, it's faith-driven. So, I mean, I just, you know, when people wonder if everything's possible, and anything is possible when God's involved in it. So, many blessings, whatever we can do as a city, you know, the, if you ever need, like I was telling you, financial advisors, anybody that we could recommend, or Mr. Renee Bobbadi, our city manager, to help you out, you know, just to make it a lot easier for you, I mean, whatever we have to do as a city, man. And not only that, I mean, as a city, too, it's unique, but also to pray, pray for David and pray for, pray for the outcome, for whatever may be, that it may be in your favor, and whatever God's favor has on you, it's always gonna be a blessing and life-changing, not only for you, but for your son and the rest of your family, so, you know, blessings to you, brother. Really proud of you, man.
David, I'll just say, and, you know, you put Santa Fe Springs on the map once again. You know, a lot of times, we don't get positive comments, we get negative, but this time was a very positive. You're a great representative for the city, congratulations, and bless you for everything that the future holds for you, so congratulations.
That's our city, that's our city, man.
So, David, I just want to say, I was actually at the game.
Not sitting there.
No, I was not in the pavilions, I wish I would have been. But, I mean, I've been a baseball fan all my life, and being at that game was incredible, emotional, and what was going on. Watching the first homerun was crazy, the second one, he hit out of the stadium, and then the third one he hits, after he struck out 10. I mean, just to be there and obviously didn't know you were the person that caught it, we were kind of looking to see the scrum of who was gonna get it. I was sitting in the lodge, and then I get a call on Saturday saying, hey, Santa Fe Springs resident caught it, I'm like, whoa, it was really surreal for me, and, I mean, this is, it was meant for you, man, and this is a life-changing experience for you, and, you know, we're here to support you and we wish you the best of luck, so, congratulations, man.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you guys, thank you so much, okay?
All right.
I'll do these football teams, get back in the playoffs with the Jets. Bring some, bring some winnings back to Santa Fe Springs.
Yeah, there you go, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. I'd like to call upon Director of Parks and Recreation, Gus Hernandez.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Red Ribbon Week is a national campaign dedicated to promoting drug-free lifestyles and raising awareness about the dangers of substance abuse. It encourages communities, schools, and families to unite in fostering healthy, safe, and positive choices among youth. Each year, our city proudly invites representatives from our local school districts to accept a proclamation commemorating Red Ribbon Week and reaffirming our shared commitment to a drug-free community. This week, or I'm sorry, in two weeks, on October 29th, we will have the Red Ribbon Parade, which will begin at 9:15. Our entire community is invited to attend this. And so at this time, I'd like to invite representatives from Little Lake City School District, Whiter Union High School District, and from Los Nietos School District to accept the proclamation and take a picture. We also have our staff members that are very integral in putting this program together. We have Coordinator Paul Brasch, come on up, Paul, and Mr. Rick Brown, our Parks and Recreation Manager.
Okay, three, two, one, one more, three, two, one.
And thank you for everything you do for our schools and our kids, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you representing here, Little Lake City School District. We have Board of Clerk, Hilda Zamora, Superintendent Jonathan Vasquez from Santa Fe High. We have the Homecoming Queen, Jayden Brown, and we also have Ms. Hughes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gus.
Just the importance of you guys, just, girls, Santa Fe Springs Court, if you guys can put the message out there about Red Ribbon Week, I mean, just the fact, I know that you guys have been great role models for us, or real models, is the way I like to call you guys. Anybody else, just put that, just put it out there, you know, because there are people who are struggling with drugs, narcotics, whatever it may be, and, you know, and the struggle, it runs deep, I mean, and so we just want to make sure that we help out our kids in our community. I know when it comes to somebody being older, all we can do is just, you know, be there as a resource, you know, for them, but when it comes to our children, we gotta do whatever we can to fight for, fight for them, you know, because one wrong move nowadays, it's not like the same where drugs were before, nowadays, you know, fentanyl will take your life, so we just have to make sure that we do our best to educate our kids in our community. So, and this is an event for all of our residents, so everybody wants to come out with a lawn chair, hang out, it's on Jersey, I mean, we start off on.
Clarkman.
Clarkman, Lake Center, and then we go all the way down Jersey to Charlesworth, so, you know, come out, it's a free event, and thank you, guys, and of course, to our Whiter PD, you know, thank you, guys, for participating, Rick, all you guys who are involved, you know, thank you, guys. Also, just real quick for Gus, if you guys notice, the things that Gus does, you know, when we made him a Parks and Rec Director, I know sometimes we got a little flack for it, because they're wondering, oh, you guys are just trying to pay people more money, and why are you doing that? I mean, Gus is so invested in Santa Fe Springs, he'll work Saturday, he'll work Sunday, he's up late at night, he's, I think he's celebrating and partying in the back right now, I think, but, 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 he's just so invested that he even bought a house in Santa Fe Springs. That's how much he's invested in this community, and he will do whatever he can for this community, so I do want to give Gus a huge shout-out, because he played a major role in all that we do, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'd like to call upon Public Information Officer, Raylene Barazza.
Good evening, Mayor Rounds, members of the City Council and community. Each October, communities across the nation come together in a shared mission of hope, courage, and awareness. The month of October is recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a national campaign dedicated to increasing awareness, supporting those impacted, and inspiring action towards prevention and early detection. Every two minutes, a woman in the United States is diagnosed with breast cancer. It's a staggering statistic that reminds us how important awareness and early detection truly are. When found and treated in its early stages, breast cancer has an incredible 98.5% survival rate, proof that knowledge, regular screenings, and access to care saves lives. We also know that prevention begins with healthy choices, maintaining a healthy weight, staying physically active, eating plenty of fruits and vegetables, avoiding smoking, and limiting alcohol consumption. These steps, though simple, play a powerful role in reducing risk. This October, the city of Santa Fe Springs proudly joins communities nationwide in recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We celebrate the incredible progress and advancements made through research, advocacy, and the strength of those who continue to fight every day. Here in our city, we're especially proud to recognize Monique Gutierrez, Director of the Abigail Barazza Foundation, which this year celebrates 20 years of advocacy for breast cancer awareness. For two decades, Monique and her team have brought our community together through Painting the Town Pink, and most recently, the Paint the Town Pink Walk, held at Los Nietos Park, which continues to grow each year, raising awareness, hope, and unity in our city. Tonight, we honor the Abigail Barazza Foundation for their unwavering dedication, compassion, and impact on so many lives. It is my pleasure, on behalf of the city of Santa Fe Springs, to officially proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in our city, and to invite Monique, Little Miss Abby, the Ms. Santa Fe Springs Court, to accept the proclamation in recognition of her 20 years of extraordinary leadership and service to our community. Thank you.
Probably weighs more than you.
Congratulations, good job.
I take first place in the walk.
What about you, Javier, come on?
Three, two, one.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Sure.
Go ahead.
Monique, I just want to say congratulations on 20 years. You've done an amazing job with your foundation and, you know, keeping your mother's legacy alive, and I just wanted to congratulate you on your past event for the Paint the Town Pink. It was amazing. Priscilla and I went over there, and we were just very, not astonished, but we were just very happy to see how coordinated and beautiful the Paint the Town Pink was, and everybody works hand-in-hand, and team players, and the girls are just as lovable as they can be, and I'm just very proud to have, again, you in our community, and ladies, the way you helped Monique rise to the occasion, it says a lot about who you are. So I just wanted to say thank you, I continue to support you, and every year, I want to see you grow, because you're an amazing person, and all of you are, so thank you very much for being in our city and contributing as much as you do. Thank you.
20 years, who would have thought in Bootsy's place, in office, we'd be here now. 20 years, Monique called and said, let's, Monita, let's do something pink for my mom. And never did we think we'd be where you're at now, and it's just amazing, and your mom is so proud of you, just, it just, it keeps growing and growing, and the first year of the, we don't call it the 5K, though, whatever K it is, whatever K it is, we had about 100 people. This one, I mean, we started it off, I mean, you had, it was, went from a small thing to, we had, like I said, representation from Assemblywoman Pacheco there, Natalie, you were there, you had Monica, Dr. Sanchez from Pico Rivera, had to come over, because her city doesn't have it, and her city's huge, and she was so proud of what our city was doing, with being so small and so mighty, that she literally came, and she did the walk with us and stuff, and it was just amazing that we're so small, but so mighty, and this is something that you just had the idea, Monique, of the heart and love for your mom, and, I mean, the Ms. Santa Fe Springs, you guys weren't even alive when this started, and look at where it's at. I mean, you're, the whole, your whole camp is awesome and great, it's, keep going, I can't, I don't know what you're gonna throw out next year, what you're gonna say, Monita, let's do this next year, but you have all the support, and your mom would be so proud of you, Monique, so we love you, we love you.
I just want to congratulate you one more time, yeah, from last year to this year, I think it at least tripled, so you guys are doing an amazing job, and as I mentioned, you know, Pico's looking into this, but it's already gone, you know, beyond our borders, and you probably have no idea what you're doing, but you're touching a lot of lives, bringing a lot of awareness to a lot of people, so thank you for doing what you're doing, keep it up, and girls, keep doing what you're doing, too, thank you.
What time did the event start? Eight in the morning? A little early, a little early, a little early, so I'm sorry I was still sleeping at that time, but either way, I mean, phenomenal job, just maybe that, maybe you could actually even do two events, three events, three walks, since we are talking about health and helping individuals out with the, so instead of just doing one, maybe you can do a couple of them, and, you know, use different resources, we have not only Los Nietos Park, you know, maybe even Santa Fe Springs Park, maybe even Little Lake Park, just so we can get other people involved, and you just set up, you know, different things like that, and maybe you could even look at any other facilities that we have, you know, maybe work together with our fire department, do a walk with them, so, you know, anything we can do to help you guys out, and, you know, bring up, bring up the awareness that you guys do, but great job, you guys.
Once again, Monique, congratulations on 20 years. And the, uh, your walk the other day was amazing. It was so well organized. I couldn't believe, and the vendors you had there promoting the breast case, cancer awareness. And as mentioned, you had a council member from Pico Rivera show up. So the word is getting out there. You're doing your job. You're doing a great job. I love the Hope Bridge. I love the pink throughout the city. I mean, look at our councilwoman. You know, I, I, it, when I saw, I saw a glow coming in here. I didn't know what the heck it was. But, uh, but congratulations, uh, on that. And, uh, and what you do with the young women of Santa Fe Springs and promoting them and the cancer awareness. I mean, you, they are at every event. They are, and it's great to see that. So congratulations and thank you for what you do. You got it.
Could you show off your shirts that we, for this year's? Yes. They were selling them at the, at the walk. That would have been better than this pink, pink outfit. I could have wore that today instead of this year. Twenty-five dollars. Hold on. There's twenty-five dollars, Joanne. The donation goes back to the thing. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Whittier Police Department, celebrating the 30th anniversary of our partnership with Santa Fe Springs. At this time, I'd like to call upon Police Chief Aviv Barr, Captain Aaron Ruiz, and City of Whittier Mayor Joe Venatieri to accept the proclamation. And before you come up here, did you want to say something first, Mayor? Okay. You're welcome.
So where's my new friend David Flores? Totally cool. Totally cool. Um, it is so good to be here. Um, I am honored to be the mayor of the city of Whittier. Um, and I'm honored to recognize 30 years of partnership with the city of Santa Fe Springs, the city of Whittier, and the Whittier Police Department. The milestone, this 30 years, is more than just years, but it's of shared priorities, shared priorities. Um, public safety is our number one responsibility at the local government level. And I'm just so pleased that between Whittier and Santa Fe Springs, we can celebrate that together because not everybody, not every city sees it that way. But we do. And we built a successful model of cooperation, puts public safety first, ensures trust in our neighborhoods. And, um, the people of, of Santa Fe Springs, I want to say to all of you, um, how fortunate all of us are to have you as our city council here in Santa Fe Springs, to have the council members we have in Whittier. And Aviv Barr loves it when I say this, and it's very, very true. Remember back during COVID and all the things that were going on? There were calls for defunding police department. Remember? We don't defund the Whittier Police Department. We defend the Whittier Police Department. Come on up here, guys. That's what we do. We are partners in doing that. So I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Um, what's fun for me is that, um, we do stuff together. The people of Santa Fe Springs, um, you don't know how many things we do together that are shared. Um, it's not just government stuff, but it's friendship stuff. Because they're friends. I think Bill, you and I went out doing ride along one night.
We did.
A couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So all I can say is thank you for the partnership. And we had two city managers at that time. They stuck their necks way out. And you know what? They provided leadership for all of us. And we are all today the beneficiaries of that leadership. God bless you and thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe, for those kind words.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's on behalf of our department, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to police this community for the last 30 years and, uh, looking forward to 30 more years. We have a formula for success. We have a city council that's very concerned about the safety of the community. There's not a day goes by that we don't talk, or Captain Ruiz and you don't talk about things that you hear and see in the community. And you have a police department that knows how to take care of a community. And together, uh, we've kept this community safe. We'll continue to do it. Uh, and as a token of our appreciation, we'd like to present you with a commemorative 30th anniversary patch. And want to thank you for your continued support and, uh, for many more years together. Thank you.
Joe, come on up. Of course. And we have a really nice proclamation here, celebrating and acknowledging the 30 years of success here on the partnership. So, uh, presented to the, to the mayor and the entire city of Whittier.
Hold it up. High like it's Simba from the Lion King. Yeah, you stay separate a little better. Thank you, guys.
Next, on the agenda, I'd like to ask our city manager, Mr. Bobbideea, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items and non-public hearing items. Uh, public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the city council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one speaker, Lee Squire. Lee Squire, Vietnam era veterans, mayor and city council. One, we honor woman and mother. We will no longer, we will no longer tolerate the degrading of those two words. Two, Thin Blue Line Flag and police across America. During the four years of the Biden administration, Thin Blue Line Flag was triggered as racism. Defund the police, reinvent the police. This rhetoric caused hate against police no more. Veterans, we need to support our brothers and sisters in blue. Military veterans, military reserves, and the National Guard serve in police across America. To the children of police, take pride in your parents. And we veterans need to speak up and defend honor of our brothers and sisters in blue. God bless America. God bless the nation of Israel. God bless my military veterans and family, and God bless police across America and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
That concludes our speakers.
Thank you. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Mr. Bobbideea, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, one communication from our, actually two communications from our Parks and Rec Director, Gus Hernandez.
Oh, good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, on Saturday, we'll be hosting our annual Halloween carnival on Saturday, October 25th, at Los Nettos Park. We invite our entire community to come out. Uh, we will be showing the Dodger game. So just, uh, it'll be game two of the game. So we will have food, laser tag, crafts, games, a kid's zone, and featuring the Dodger game.
Dodger Dogs?
Sorry?
Dodger Dogs?
Dodger Dogs. We can make that, we can make that possible.
Gus?
Yes, sir.
Maybe on the flyer itself, I'm not saying to recreate it, but I think you need to just to put that you're going to be showing the game.
Absolutely.
Just so people are aware and, you know, we still get the, the following that we, we always get.
Absolutely. Uh, next slide, please. And on Tuesday, October 28th, we invite our entire community to the Aquatic Center Groundbreaking Ceremony, which is the Paul T. Nakamura Regional Aquatic Center Groundbreaking Ceremony. Our groundbreaking ceremony will begin at four o'clock. We'll have some food, refreshments, and it's a great milestone as we break ground on phase two of the Aquatic Center project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gus.
Gus, one more item. So on Saturday, the best university in the world will be here?
That's right. Uh, we are hosting on Saturday, October 25th, beginning at 9:00 AM. We're hosting six universities collegiate softball. UCLA will be competing against, um, schools Long Beach State, Fresno State.
LMU.
Loyola Marim, Marimont University. Um, they're having a two-day showcase over at Santa Fe Springs Athletic Fields. Our entire community is invited. This is the very first time that collegiate softball will be played in, in park space. So we're very excited about that. Uh, there will be a 10:00 AM panel discussion as well. Um, and, um, invites will be sent to all of our city council. This is being made as part of the partnership with En Fuego. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Next, the Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council Consent Calendar. We have a total of 15 consent items, numbers seven through 21. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Mora.
None tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Rodriguez. Mayor Protem Zamora.
None tonight, sir.
And I have none. Council comments, AB 1234, council conference reporting. Councilmember Mora.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first thing I want to remind everybody, remind your friends and family, you know, to vote. Voting's coming up. And according to the county, there may be some issues if you vote a little too late or mail your ballot in too late. So everybody's got it already? Mark the, uh, decision of your choice and get that ballot out. Uh, looking forward to the Aquatic Center, the Nakamura Aquatic Center, Paul T. Nakamura Regional Aquatic Center. It's been a long time in the making. This started a few years back, but it's going to be a reality. This is phase two, and then it's going to be officially open next year, right? Or 2026? Anyway, it's getting there. But we're, we're on the move for that one. So I'm, I'm honored to be a part of that. Um, let's see, Avi's already gone. Um, uh, to the Nagle family, um, my condolences, uh, to, to Lee. Um, he was an incredible, uh, man during the Christmas float. I had a chance to work with him for many, many, many years. Always a smile, always happy, always wearing his cowboy hat. And, uh, he always managed to get into the van at the very last minute, but only when Maria was there. If she wasn't there, we did leave him behind a couple of times. So, sorry. But we went back and we picked him up. And he was already on his way home with his yellow jacket and the traffic control flashlight heading to the yard. Even though he didn't live that far, but he was already heading that direction, but we went back and picked him up. So, uh, a couple funny memories with, uh, with, uh, with Lee. But, um, you know, our, our condolences and thank you for allowing him to be part of our, uh, Santa Fe Springs family. Um, let's see, we also have some, uh, seniors that, um, are hitting milestone birthdays. We used to have them come to our, our chambers, uh, to be honored. And we'd like to see if we could actually, you know, continue that, even though they may not be able to, to join us at that time. Um, but under that, you know, we're looking forward to all these holiday events coming up. Uh, city's still moving. Uh, one, we had a great meeting with a business expo and, uh, inviting businesses to come to our city. And they were quite impressed. So our city manager and his staff, we had a panel of experts up there. And, um, you know, we had some business, um, owners too. Uh, it was a, it was a, it was a great event. So we're, we're looking very strong as far as businesses go. But, um, uh, happy Halloween, everybody, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had State of the City, which was great. I don't think we've talked about it.
Right.
Everything blended inside. I can't remember exactly what day it was. Um, it was a great event. It was very positive. And, and thank you, Renee. You did an awesome job at State of the City. Very well attended. It was sold out. Awesome. Um, we had the, the Hua event, which was amazing. So many people, so many people from outside the area and no problems. There was like really no problems at all. And it was an amazing event. Thank you, everyone that participated. And every year, they say it's going to get bigger and better. So.
Councilman, I just want to clarify, the State of the City was the mayor's, uh, he, he put the presentation together. I just, I just filled in for him.
Well, it was a great job. Great job.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Um, I said the Hua event was awesome. It was great. Um, Natalie, it's always great to see you here. Uh, I, in fact, it's funny, I text, uh, Blanca Pacheco and said, you know what? You're, you're the face of Blanca. You're at every event. So thank you. It makes a difference seeing somebody here from, in Sacramento. So thank you for being here. Um, we actually did the run together. So thank you on Sunday. Um, and I'm trying to think about, uh, Firehouse. We also had an open house, which was awesome and great. And, uh, the Nakamoras, thank you so much for allowing us to do the aquatics under, under your son's name. It's an, no, it's an honor for us to represent your son. So thank you so much. And that's it. I'm going to leave it like that. So we have other people still. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Yes. Everything that they said, we've all been a part of it. So I don't want to, uh, say it over again, but just that we have a, a fantastic city here. Uh, Lee Squire, I want to say thank you for everything that you do, getting up here and everything that you say is just so positive and really touches the heart. And I just want to say thank you for being in our city and making a difference in our lives. And just, uh, just have a great, uh, great evening. God bless you all. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora.
Thanks, uh, thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. I mean, it's truly great to see you guys out here. And, you know, to those who have lost loved ones, I mean, I know that, uh, State of the City, myself and Annette went to go see Duke. Um, you know, I've known Duke for such a long time. I know I saw one either there too. And, um, it's one of those things where we don't know at any moment, you may lose somebody in your life. And, and when you go through somebody that you've lost, I mean, it, it's difficult. And, and I ask you not just to be a friend in that moment, for, for, for those of you at the senior center, but I ask you to be a friend, you know, on holidays. Uh, you know, come around more often. Maybe go see that individual because when there's heartache, heartache's not just that day or that season. That, it's, it's, it's a lifetime. I mean, I know the Nakamoras till, till this day, I mean, it's been years later and they still mourn that passing. So just the way that we can honor your son's name and, and Paul, your name, um, because you gave that name to your son. I mean, you know, it's, it's one of those things that it's the least we can do to a, to a, to a, to a hero in, in our community. And, and we want to make sure that we do our part to always, you know, acknowledge those heroes. Um, so thank you guys for coming out. Um, I know that broadband, hopefully with the Gateway Cities, we're going to be, um, able to put that in. The city approved that. So it's going to be a hundred and $3 million that goes to 27 cities, 11 unincorporated areas, on 10 gigabytes. Uh, so eventually, I'm hoping that we will actually own it ourselves because what they build, they eventually give it to us. And then from there, we will put that pricing on it too, so, to help out our community. But 10 gigabytes on its own. And I'm hoping after that, we can be a smart city and we can start installing cameras for public safety. I know that right now graffiti's been, um, a nuisance. And, um, so we just want to make sure those residents who, you know, I, I know that sometimes you want to be the hero and maybe go stop somebody. I mean, please don't. Just if you can call, take a picture, do whatever you can and report it. Um, please do that. And, and, you know, whatever we can do in those communities to actually have more policing, not only through Whittier PD, but through PSO. I know that, uh, individuals and residents have liked it when. I know that individuals and residents have liked it when, in the evening, when, or even daytime, when they go around and they actually have the lights on, even though there's no siren on, they just have the light. It actually brings peace of mind. So if you guys can continue to do that, please do that. And to all of our staff, I know that, you know, when you guys are going through hardships and adversity, I do appreciate you guys. I do appreciate that you guys come day in and day out. I know sometimes it could be a thankless job, but not here. I mean, I, I do appreciate the work that you guys do. So, you know, I know, I bring it up, Renee, thank you for your leadership. It, it has helped a lot. And it's, it's helped direct everybody and it makes it easier for everyone else who in, who have their positions or who, who work, you know, to take pride in their job and knowing that, hey, they have somebody to take their side and back them up. And sometimes you take the hit for all of us. And I know there's cases where I don't think you should, but, but you do. So I do appreciate that. Also, UCLA is on a winning streak, so Renee's really happy besides the Dodgers winning. So three in a row, yippee. I mean, they're not gonna do much, but still, I mean, it's, it's a start. It's a start. Three in a row for him is, I'm happy. But you know what? Hopefully the World Series can happen.
Mayor Protem, without due respect, we are tied with the other school down the road, three and one in the Big Ten, so we're excited about that.
That's true. That's USC he's talking about, just in case. But, hey, but other than that, you guys, you know, it's great to see the Dodgers. It's great to see a resident benefit. And I hope this, this, this resident, I mean, if you only knew his story. And it's well deserved. It's well deserved for that kid, for that young man and his family. So, I mean, those of us, I mean, we do well for our, our neighborhood when the Dodgers do well. So, or when any of our LA teams do well. So other than that, you guys, God bless and may God bless the City of Santa Fe Springs always. Natalie, next time, call me so I can walk with you because I didn't get the phone call to wake up and stuff like that. Just let me know. All right, so you guys have a good night. Take care.
What an exciting night tonight. I, I love it. This is, I think, the third meeting in a row where we've had a full house. That is amazing. And I can tell you, I've been on the council for a few years now. This month of October, and it's not over yet, I've been the busiest that I've ever been. Our city manager is keeping us going. And that means we're not just standing still, we're moving forward. We're doing a lot of good things in the Santa Fe Springs. We have a lot of vision. We have a great council with, with, with amazing vision for the city. And we're working on stuff. Things are starting to work out. We're starting to sign some documents. And it's all good. It's all good. And it's not for us, it's for you, the residents, both the residential residents and the business community. It's gonna benefit all of us. And I love the fact, I think I mentioned it earlier, to see positive news coverage of something happen in our city. Because as we all know, news is usually negative. This was a positive thing and it continued on. I was able to attend the Lantern Tour at Heritage Park on Friday night. I did miss the game. I probably, I missed a historical game, but the Lantern Tour was fantastic. Staff, everyone involved did an amazing, amazing job. And I hope we can recognize, we have a hometown resident, hometown resident that writes the script for this. And it, it was, so hopefully we can bring him here at, at some point to recognize him and what he does. I mean, that's what, Santa Fe Springs, Renee said a great the other day. We say we're small but mighty? No, we're big and strong. So I, I like that term better. And we keep moving forward. And also, working through Blanca Pacheco's office, I don't think I'm gonna steal anybody's thunder, but she does a Veterans Award each year. And she, to recognize veterans that have continued not just being a veteran, but their community service. And our very own Mayor Richard Moore was nominated and selected to receive that award. So I think that's well deserved. I mean, from everything, from being a police officer to a school board member, to a city council member, to the mayor of Santa Fe Springs, and, and a planning commissioner. I mean, he's done a lot in his career. So I'm, I'm glad that he, he was honored, will be honored to get that award. So, Joe Angel, we'll make sure, we'll, we'll do, start doing a couple of running events. We'll do one at eight and maybe one at three. How's that? Perfect?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay, okay. But I want to close the meeting for a longtime friend, an amazing person. What Santa Fe Springs is built on a volunteer, and that's Mr. Lee Noggle. I mean, he, the Noggles are here, his wife is here, his son and daughter-in-law are here. And just, if you saw him, I think somebody mentioned his cowboy hat. He stood out and he loved to do that. He did not want to miss a night and we're gonna miss him dearly. In fact, yeah, he just, an all-around, I liked his, he had the best sense of humor too. He had an infectious smile. When he smiled, you had to smile right along with him. So I want to close tonight's meeting in memory of Lee Noggle. Thank you.